And see if anybody's interested in, oh, we need a receipt of evidence for that we were properly. Notice counsel.
County Board of Supervisors August 20th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places and posted on the county website on August 15, 2024. In addition, on Thursday, August 15, 2024, at 3:51 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email.
Counsel.
It is appropriate notice.
Okay. Need roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Orndahl.
Virchell.
Pam Gardby.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Rock.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Francis Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
John Bonner Prize.
Here.
All members are here.
Can you please join me with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it sustains, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay. I move to approve the agenda had presented. Need a motion or I need a second to the motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Need a motion on the matters for adoption on consent agenda.
Y'all make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the resolution? Any of the resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same side. Public comment?
She was gone.
Take up three minutes.
William Malone from Farmington Township for the next two days. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First of all, you canceled your board meeting last month, which was supposed to be my opportunity to thank you all for the opportunity for the last 18, almost 19 years to serve Polk County. It has been my true honor. I've grown up literally with this county. I remember calling my mother on my way home one day and saying, Mom, the work I do really makes a difference, and it still means the same today. I also noticed that on your agenda is the confirmation of a corporation counsel. I believe his name is Joseph Loso. I do have some concerns. I believe you are upgrading from this corporation counsel. Mr. Loso is probably one of the most genuine human beings I've ever met. He's also one of the most intelligent. He has integrity, compassion, can communicate on a high level and a low level. He's also a dork, which makes me appreciate him more because I'm one also. I do hope that you confirm his appointment as the corporation counsel, as I'm sure he'll do an extraordinary job. I wanted to also say a few things. I know I only have three minutes, but just for the record, I believe Chris Nelson was allowed to speak at about 15 minutes at one of the most recent county committee meetings, so hopefully nobody cuts me off. There are a few hires recently that I believe are extraordinary to the future of Polk County. Don Wertham. I have known him for years. He used to be with Extension. He is now your general government division director. He is also, like Mr. Loso, one of the most intelligent people I have ever met. He has this county's best interest at heart, and I know that as your deputy county administrator, he will work tirelessly with Mo to make sure that the county is headed in the right direction. His staff, human resources, and finance, they are the integral parts of what serves all of the rest of the county. And they sometimes get a bad rap because they have to say yes and no. They have to tick off other division directors because they're allowing for certain things to happen. But our hiring and retention rate has improved, and I just hope that everybody appreciates the staff that Mr. Wertham has working with him because they are also extraordinary people. Obviously, Mo Norby, as the new county administrator, I've worked with him for many years, and I hope everyone supports him because I also know that he has this county's, see what I'm saying? Best interest at heart. All of our division directors, we meet all the time, or they, I used to meet, with them all the time, and there can be differences of opinion and debate. But when they meet, they speak frankly. It's a safe space. They are working for the citizens of Polk County. There is not one of them that I believe is a detriment to Polk County. So I think supporting them is also integral. I also want to say something about one of my dearest friends, somebody I convinced to come back to Polk County after a five-or-so-year hiatus, Sarah McCurdy. She is an extraordinary person. She works really hard. She's a type A personality, and she's going to challenge people, and that might not always make people happy. But I can tell you one thing, she is one of the best hires Polk County has ever made, and I hope you also support Sarah McCurdy and zoning. I also have a gift here. It's not really a gift. It's actually turning something back in that I borrowed. It is the guide for Polk County Board of Adjustment, third edition, June 2004. I borrowed this from Supervisor O'Connell a while ago, and I promised to return it to him, so I have it here today, so you can't say that I stole anything from Mr. O'Connell. I wanted to also note Brad Olson, who is also the, I guess, Clam Falls Legal Department? So anytime he gives you a legal opinion, make sure you check it with Joseph Loso. I also think extraordinarily highly of our county clerk. Her and I have become friends, and she's been probably the best county clerk that I've ever known in my 19 years or so here. And we've been through a few, but she puts up with you guys, and that's hard. So many times, you're changing agendas and you're moving things around, and she makes sure it all gets done. So if I haven't mentioned you, it doesn't mean I don't think highly of you. Johnny B., you are my supervisor for the next two days. You've helped me find somebody to do my lawn. You also are an extraordinary human being that serves Polk County well. Again, thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you. I'm out.
Any other public comment? Aaron Dunn, you don't have any upstairs, so we're moving on to resolutions. Need a motion on the Resolution 3324, Personnel Policy.
I'll make a motion to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Motion made and for discussion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on 3324. Want to address it?
Sure. I can start out, depending on what questions individuals have on it. This is a process that started all back in 2023, probably May, April, somewhere in that time in 2023, I'm going through there, because a lot of our policies, our personnel policy, our handbook, our travel policies, all intermingled and conflicted each other. So it took a long time to sit there and meet with legal counsel. At the start, it was Administrator Netherland that was started this process, going through each page and what needed to come out of the policy. They need to go in the handbook. What was the overarching policy that the board needed to approve, and then develop a new handbook, which were, which are the rules of how to follow those policies set by the board. So painstakingly, some of these meetings were five hours long to go through three pages. It was pretty incredible on how to pull that off legally, but it went through general government. In your pack, it was the red line version of what went through there and the changes that were made. And it was recommended by general government to come to the board for approval. Entertain any questions, or we can turn it over to Mr. Wertham if you have questions, or I'm not sure which discussion you want on that.
You want us to provide information on, like, grammar or nitpicky stuff like that? Or is that something I can?
Happily take any scrivener's errors and correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it. You want to do that later? That's right? Okay. I have one question then. Does the, and I can't remember her name, who does the disaster training and stuff? Lisa, yes. Does she?
Lisa McMahon.
Yes. Does she report up through the HR division then? Okay. The only reason I ask is there was, you know, different areas where it talks about safety, and it doesn't ever mention that area then. I don't know what areas she reports up to.
Can you answer that? So she reports to, went through the sheriff's office?
Ah, okay.
There, there's an ongoing project to look at safety here in the building and safety outside of the building, including the whole county. Continuum of government, so we can keep government running if there's some sort of event. She's instrumental in that, but so are HR and IT, but she does not report up to.
Because I worked with her on disaster recovery plan for, like, the Polk County Museum and stuff, but because when it talks about safety procedures and processes, and it always goes back to the Human Resources Director, and I didn't know if Lisa was involved in that, or?
That's, and we could, sounds like we could clarify that, since it's about workplace safety.
Yep.
It would be a separate sort of thing from dealing with disasters or?
Yep. Okay.
So I think that's a great clarification to make.
Okay. I have another one on page 19, but commitment to a workplace free of sexual harassment. And then it goes on to talk about all these things, but it never mentions sexual harassment. That's the header, is sexual harassment, but it talks about discrimination, harassment, retaliation, and I'm assuming that's just a given then, because the header doesn't talk about retaliation or discrimination. It just talks free of sexual harassment.
So that's 2032D?
Yeah, D. And I don't know. It just could be a word.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any? Concerns, questions, comments? Brad?
I just have some comments. Not that we need to go through absolutely everything, but is there someone who could just give us a summary of the major points of change within it?
Well.
Highlighted.
I'd be happy to. We can go over that. We got that loaded up. Thanks for the question. Just a little bit of overview. Go to the next slide, Claire. Why would we want to update the personnel policy? And the administrator covered some of that, but partially just due to timelines. I mean, we had not really taken a hard look at this since March 2022. The organization has changed a lot. The composition of the board has changed. I specifically mentioned inconsistencies that we had. We had inconsistencies within the policy itself, and we may still find some. As an example, we had three different ways of characterizing LTEs and the maximum number of hours that they could work, limited term employee in the state policy. So we wanted to clear that sort of thing up. We also, and Mo mentioned this as well, we had some redundancies across the handbook and the personnel policy, and just as we had inconsistencies even within the personnel policy, we had, those were amplified when you take another whole document into it. So we wanted to, we wanted to clean up anything that was different in the handbook and in personnel policy. Importantly, we weren't referencing federal laws that are relevant for personnel policy. We've got a list here. I bore you with the entirety. So those are what were driving change for us. It shall also be noted that in the general policies of the county, we're supposed to be reviewing finance policy and personnel policy every year. So we had been tardy in this. Next slide, please. Just mentioned one of the key changes, trying to scrub out any inconsistencies or redundancy across the policy and the handbook. There was no section on job classification. So a fundamental tool for HR is to have, like a local government organization, have a wage grid, which lists all of the positions in the county in this case, together in pay ranges with a minimum, a market or control point, and then a maximum. So there's no discussion of that in the personnel policy. That's sort of a fundamental tool and one that I would think the board would have interest in. So we added that section. We clarified how hiring and promotion works within the county, how grade changes get made, wage adjustments, if there are interim appointments, how those get made. And then I mentioned LTEs a minute ago. We wanted to make sure that we got that right. There's a new section in the policy on department structure and how that might be modified, and this is important. Before, the general government director, the administrator, and the department head could reduce FTE count to make changes, structural changes, like a reduction force, but we couldn't do anything to reformulate the workforce to meet new opportunities if there was no change in FTE and money, and we thought that would be good to be able to do. So there's a section in this, in this policy that allows, with the final approval of the administrator, a department head to suggest changes to his or her own organization, and as long as they're essentially budget neutral and FTE neutral, and they've got the approval of the administrator, then that can be done. We think operationally, that's very, very important. And lastly, there was really not much on separation from employment, particularly with respect to involuntary separation. So we, we wanted to strengthen that. We never like to lose employees, particularly good ones, especially good ones, maybe only. So we added that to the policy. So those are really the five major changes. Otherwise, a lot of reorganization and tightening up. If we could go to the next slide, and this is the last one I got. To think about the policy, it's really the governance of the human resources. It's your document for telling us, administration, how we should shape our workforce. So roles and responsibilities. What are your roles? What's the general government committee's role? What's my role? What's Mo's role? HR director's role? Those are much clearer than they were before, and those don't appear in the handbook. We only want them in one place. High-level employment policy. Sharon, you called out one of the commitments. That's a whole new section for us. I should have put that in key changes. General legal statements about what we should be doing and not be doing. Competitive market. So this was defined in the old personnel policy, but we improved that section. We wanted to be specific, very specific about it, so there wasn't any ambiguity, who we think we're competing with and why. And that job classification plan, that's that wage grid again. That's, that's, there's a lot in there, and it's not in the handbook. How employees will be compensated, not specific pay, but generally how the county feels about compensation and how that relates to budget, very importantly. Human resources, how, this is general administration, that we have a handbook, that we do performance evaluations, we maintain records. That's not in the handbook anymore. That's in the policy. Stipulations regarding our currently one enterprise, GAM. So what do we do with GAM? How is it different? That's stipulated now in the policy. Handbook's different. It's really about how our managers work with the workforce itself, how we implement the policies in terms of procedures and practices. So recruitment and promotion, how timekeeping is done, what the benefit structure is, standards of conduct, what's good behavior, what's not, IT acceptable use, and then how to make an appeal if you feel like something's not right in your workplace. So we've tried to make these as different as possible, as discreet as possible, and useful to you as a governing board, and then useful for the managers in this room for getting stuff done. So those are the changes as we see them, and we'd appreciate your support on this. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Is there any spot where you're going to instead of yearly, every other, or are you going to still do it every year to review these?
Oh, you know, my feeling is we should do this.
Every year, every other.
And I think once we've got this and the financial policy tightened up, it will be a lot easier. This was some heavy lifting as.
To catch them up. So then, if you catch them up, you're going to go like every other? Or?
Prefer every year, just to review it, not that there be major changes or any changes, that we don't let anything slide, that if something comes up or is passed by the federal level, that it get implemented right away.
Right away. Okay.
Johnny? Don, when somebody leaves or retires, do you get an exit statement or paragraph?
We sure try. That's obviously voluntary on the part of the departing employee, but we try. Yes.
We learn a lot.
Very helpful of us.
We learn a lot from.
Absolutely so.
We had a good one with Malia.
Yeah.
And Joe's got some, took down the comments, and they were all quite positive, as you probably would expect, but it's rewarding, at least, you know, to hear what a good employee has to say about our operation. Any other comments or questions in reference to the, to the resolution? Aaron Dunn, need a motion on the resolution. I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution pass. Resolution 3424 on the fee agreement. Your pleasure on that.
Motion to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Motion made to bring it to the floor for discussion. Seconded, favor. Oppose, same side. All right, so open for discussion.
Do you want me to start out?
Well, you might as well see, explain what we've, how it transpired.
So really, the first part of the budget process, these are the fees for 2025. All departments of staff looked at their fees, as they do every year, to see whether they need increasing or decreasing. Policy states that we can only collect what it costs to administer these services. We can't make revenue off these or profit off these, if we would. You'll notice there are some changes in there, especially in the health department side. All the changes are highlighted in yellow. One of them, under nursing, was left blank. That is $180 also. I don't know if your copy has it there, but it's on page 39. That remained the same, but some of them increased because of the restructuring at the state level. The state is now asking for more money from the counties for these services, which increases our cost. Some of the health department ones were restructured. You noticed they changed the parameters on how to inspect the pool. You know, there's all different new categories. Now you'll notice down for pools. Along that, with restaurants and campgrounds, the state restructured those. So those all went up. As far as the health department, restaurants, that number was based off, the original numbers were based off of two sanitarian, registered sanitarians to inspect those. In our state audit, we've always been audited that we do not have enough of those for inspections for how many restaurants we have. So that number now, we staff pivoted and is now hiring another sanitarian. So those fees are based off three sanitarians inspecting our restaurants.
Comments, questions?
If you have specific ones for specific fees, I have most of the directors in house here that could, for the subject matter expert on what those fees are. Do not have Mo member.
No.
So there was discussion a couple months ago about a $30 garbage fee. I do not see it in here. Is that seconded? Is that in here? It's not in here.
That'll be part of the budget resolution as passing that one.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Olson?
So it's not a fee?
Did I offer something? Yeah, it's like, it's not charged per offering. So if I have seven restaurants, I have to have seven inspections. Fee will be assessed based on certain criteria, like whether the property is approved or not. I suppose you could say we're splitting hairs here. In fact, we haven't figured out exactly how to get it through the budget process, but you approved it previously this year in a resolution. So we will see it again in the budget, but we didn't think it was necessary to include it in the fee schedule because it is, fees, not a fee that's allocated on a per-use tax item.
So would that qualify then, Don? I'm sorry, Jane. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ed.
Would that qualify then, Don, as more of a special charge and a fee? It's a special charge that's put on a tax rather than a fee that's charged at the time that it happens? Would you agree that that is the distinction?
Think that'd be a better way to categorize it.
Spelt it better coming as a separate resolution versus putting it just into a fee schedule where someone has scrivener error changed something, and someone didn't catch it, that we had it in resolution form.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Chair, if there isn't any more comments, I move to approve Resolution 3424 to a top of the fee schedules, close for 25 minutes. Second? Second.
Steve, that I can make?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Resolution passed. Confirmation is the appointment by the chairman. We didn't, I don't have any point made at all. None this month. Go to the county administrator and see what he has for appointment other than
I have, I have two that need confirmation and one other one. The one I need, two I need confirmation on, the first is Joe Loso as corporation counsel.
Okay.
Should we take each one individually then?
Pardon me?
Take them each individually if there's three.
If there are three, yes, I would assume so.
Yes.
Do we do them by?
There's two that need confirmation. One is just informational.
Okay, with, how do we confirm them? By resolution or what?
Motion.
Motion only?
Motion to approve Joe Lozo as corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion made second to approve counsel Lozo for, for appointment. For our legal counsel. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, approvals.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking us on.
Okay, what else do you have?
The second appointment is for the Board of Adjustments. It is Mr. Jim Anderson to a three-year term. He is currently on there as an alternate and reappoint him back to the Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Made a motion, motion made.
Seconded and seconded.
Any discussion in reference to that? All in favor? Say bye-bye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, you have one more?
My third one, you've already, you already know about now after public comment, but is appointing Don Wertham as deputy county administrator with his background, so.
I move for approval.
All right, you don't need to move in on that?
Not.
Okay. Okay, we'll recognize his confirmation of the counsel. Chairman's report. I have a lot to report other than the discussions that we've gone through. Resolutions. We're getting a lot of activity on the mental health fielder that we put out in reference to hopefully something being accomplished in our area in Northwest Wisconsin for a mental health facility or some sort of system of mental health, which we felt was being ignored. And apparently from the responses that we've received, there's a lot of other counties and organizations throughout the Northwest part of Wisconsin feel the same way. So we're trying to, to get it organized. Brad's been busy on other assignments, however, I think he's devoted, still is devoting quite a bit of time as the chairman of that committee or that ad hoc committee. And I expect we're going to get some some positive feedback shortly. Pretty much all I have. So administrator, do you have anything to report?
I have a few things to report. We were going to report on the budget. CLA will be here at the committee, general government, and board in September to talk about more of the audit and stuff. I did give a presentation to each committee on a condition of the county, but I'll reaffirm that at September's county board meeting also with a presentation. Sales tax was down for July at 1.7%, well, $46,000. Equalized value in the county is up 9%. New construction came in at about 1.34%. AMRI was awarded the housing contract out of that $200,000 that was set aside for housing program. That contract is currently being developed and being sent to AMRI then for that money. It's for townhomes built near the high school. Right now, the county is updating the rec plan. This is ongoing. It's done every five years. Right now, it's out for public input. So on our website, if people want to make comments, they can go to the, the website to make comments on the rec plan. So that's, that's going right now. We're still working on balancing the budget. We're close. We had our hands out to departments already, and we're going through that, that phase, just trying to solidify that with a balanced budget. The budget will include bonding, should the board accept that with that. Also, today, we had our first confirmed bat with rabies in Polk County since nineteen, 2014. This was following an encounter with a human. That's really all the data I have on that right now. But they did, that bat did test positive for rabies in Polk County. The, the last four cases of human rabies in Wisconsin occurred in 1959, 2000, 2004, and 2010. And all four cases acquired the disease from infected bats. So that public release should have went out today from Tanya's group saying on top of that. So if you hear information on that, that's the only information I have on that one. So with that. And I just want to, that's really all I have. Other than that, I just want to thank you for the support and stuff. The personnel policy was a heavy lift and very long meetings going page by page and then page by page again, back to the same page again. So, thank you.
Thanks for your effort. Do you have something to say?
I was in touch with Robin Bosch. She's our coordinator for Wisconsin County Association.
Yes.
And I've been talking to her about our health.
Mental health.
Mental health. And, you know, everything's out of session right now, but
I'm sure they'll be aware of it.
Our association works hard, yeah.
Any announcements from supervisors or any reports of, we'll start with Doug.
A couple of weeks ago, I, the Bone Lake management held their annual meeting. It was held at the Lock School. And I, just looking out, there was probably sixty, seventy people. And one of the issues that came up is the clean lakes, clean waters, and Bone Lake has two landings, one to the north is owned by Bone Lake, or yeah, the town of Bone Lake. And the one to the town is, the south is Georgetown. And they just remod, re, redid the one on the south and re-gravelled it and made it more usable, but it's still so small, they park along the road, do home drive, and you can hardly get through. So they were talking about whether they should, how soon, whether they're going to put a cleaning station at the new, the fixed up South Landing. And then the, the citizens or lake owners, members, then one of the big topics they had was whether it's being used or whether it's not. Because going, how'd they say that? Going in, it was like 35% and going out was only 15%. Cleaning your boat and making sure all the weed dropped. So I guess my point is the only interesting, really interesting part of that was I, I was down there involved with putting the one that's on the north end. And we drove there yesterday, Sunday. I and Mike and I and looked at the new remodeled south one, and there is, I think there's one of those so busy that I think there was one of those broom bucket cleaners that they're starting with, but the citizens want more. And that one was highly used on Sunday, and I didn't realize it at the time, but then we drove around and we went to the North Landing, and the whole landing was full. And the boats were just out in that bay, just full. And it was one boat after another loading out of there. So we, I talked to a fellow standing by his boat, and it was a musky tournament.
Oh.
So the interesting part I watched was every boat that came out, they had another one behind them. So they went right on out, and then they, I'm sure they checked their trailer then, but they didn't clean them at the cleaning station. And there wouldn't have been any way because there was, I think he said, close to forty boats on Bone Lake, and then they had more on another lake, and they do Deer Lake, and I didn't hear what the throw was. But it would, that's what the discussion was at the management district meeting was whether it's used or not. And I know for a fact that it wasn't being used on Sunday. So I, but I have also talked to, I haven't talked to Mr. Muskie Fisherman, but I have talked to the bass clubs, and they swear that they're some of the most cleanest boats coming out because they take care of them, because that's what they do is come in and out of lakes, and they respect the keeping them clean, doing their, doing this right.
Directly to that, because I happen to be not only the sponsor of that muskie tournament, being our gun club, but I was in it. And we also spend about fifteen minutes at presentation at the fisherman's meeting on Friday night on cleanliness. And the majority of these guys that fish tournaments know that those boats need to be cleaned, and they are probably super conscious of making sure they do a good job of those boats moving from lake to lake. So despite a lot of them, you see pull out, it's primarily to get out of the way.
Yep.
A lot of them will stop up on the shoulder and finish cleaning off their boats.
We watch all that.
It's, it's more, and I can, I can see it when you come in as a bystander and look at forty boats sitting in the bay, which there was at four o'clock on Sunday. That's when they were pulling off. It looks a little bit overwhelming, but their biggest concern is probably not those guys that are moving lake to lake all the time because they're very aware of it, and they get schooled on it pretty regularly. It's how do we educate the rest of those weekend warriors, so to speak, as to the need for doing that?
Yeah. He did tell me they were going gun club, so.
Okay. Kim first.
I just, we get an update on the recycle center down there. I mean, it looks like a bomb went off six months ago, and it hasn't been done. You know, I mean, weeds are four foot high on the dirt.
We were waiting for one last state permit with a wall change in there, so the contractor pulled off a little bit. It's still on schedule to be done by the beginning of November. The date for the punch list has been set. Want to say it's November ninth. That's what I remember from my email this morning, but it is set, we'll be completed this year. So you should see movement. The clean sweep is this Thursday. I'm there for the hazardous household cleanup event, so there'll be no work for sure on Thursday.
Okay, just looks pretty rugged.
I agree.
Yep, I was just going to give a, a quick report on the annual meeting of the Apple River Protection and Rehab District. Once again, this year, we were proud to report that there have been no zebra mussels discovered at all in the district's portion of the Apple River. The water quality is good. There also are boat washing stations at several places on the river as well. The two weed harvesters ran a season with a mild winter last year, mild temperatures, no snow cover. The weeds were more prolific than usual. They took 500 loads out of the river. And I forget how many tons that is, but it was a lot. And the members of the river district who were there voted in favor of a levy increase this year of $10,000.
Are they, just a question, I know I've heard the report in the past on the improvement of the water in reference to the weed harvesting.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons they bought the other one.
Yeah.
But it's still improving?
Yeah, the water quality is still improving. I just got to say, this Billy Jo and her husband Dave Slushner, who are very active with the district, are a huge blessing to that community. They both put in a lot of time and effort and work, mechanic work, things that they do for free to keep the district going. The district operates on a very small margin. It's about $1,200 this year. That's why they approved the levy increase. They donate a lot of time and, and talent certainly to keep everything going there.
Now, that river was a beauty for years.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole, whole new thing. They keep the channels open. They try to get up to next to people's docks when they can and, and things as well. So they, they do a fabulous job. I can't say enough good things about them.
They identified water coming out of the Apple River in the Mississippi.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I attended the sheriff's night out in Osho and in Baltimore Lake.
Oh, did you?
Pretty, pretty big time for kids in Baltimore Lake. I know Walmart donated four bicycles. And kids were riding and signing up and just having a fantastic time with and Don Burrows and Sheriff's Department. See them, just give them a big thanks for especially what they did for the kids, nice program.
You, anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to remind the board that we have a graduation coming up in CJCC early September. Anybody that could make it, they really appreciate when the county board comes to show support. John and I went to the open house at the fair grounds when they had it. And Sharon Kelly and I went to the ribbon cutting for the pothole trail at the interstate park.
Okay. One more item. Second, motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye and aye.